Okay, thank you. All right, so welcome everybody. This is the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals, Tuesday, November 9th. And because of COVID, I'm going to start by reading this paragraph. Take the downwind steam up. So pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with the applicable law. The meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted both in person at the meeting location listed above, which is here, am I reading the right thing? And via remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. In-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting on purpose, please email your questions, comments prior to or during the meeting to And that is J.B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y@northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. All right. So we've kicked this meeting off, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, two to five, our United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So let us proceed with the acceptance of the minutes. Does anybody have any additions, edits on the minutes?
None from me, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the minutes.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting the minutes? So I need to do a roll call because we have remote people.
Actually, do we have remote folks?
Yeah, we do. We do. Ellen and Alexandria.
Yes, you do.
Yep.
I would.
All right. Roll call it is. Paul?
Aye.
Ellen?
Present. I wasn't here.
Okay. All right, you want to pass. Ellen?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. All right, Ellen's going to pass. And Alexandria?
Yes.
All right. And I will vote yes. So minutes are accepted.
Let's get one more vote because Ellen, Ellen just went present, so let's get one associate to make a five.
I wasn't present either. I was present.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. Michael votes aye. Okay. All right, new public hearing, 564 Chickering Road. Mr. Pusian, will you read the notice, please?
Notice hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Peter March, New Hampshire Signs for Property at 564 Chickering Road, MAP 70, Parcel 19, North Andover, Mass., 01845 in the GB zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195, 6.5, prohibitions in the GB zoning district for the purpose of allowing refurbishment of the signage at the Hafner site and to continue existing internal illumination. Specifically, applicant has requested a relief variance for an internally illuminated sign. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By art of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Clark, Jr., Esquire Chairman.
Hey, I'll miss this, Ellen.
All right. So is there somebody here from 564 Chickering Road? And as you start, could you introduce yourself, sir?
Good evening. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Gold ledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. And I'm here to petition the zoning board for variance to allow the refurbishment of signage at the Hafner site, 564 Chickering Road, and to continue the existing internal illumination outside it. Hafner's, the Hafner's organization was bought by the Energy North Group, which is now Lawrence about five years ago. Brand had been allowed to fall into disrepute. Approximately, I think, 15 stations, predominantly in the Lawrence, Lowell, Andover area, and those sites had been allowed to decline. So Energy North has been consolidating those sites, is now embarking on a program to refurbish them and rebuild them. All 13 sites, or I believe it's about 13, are going to be rebuilt this year, and the North Andover one hopefully will be one of those. The site, as you know, as you can see as you drive by, has also fallen into disrepair. Canopy's in a pretty poor state, the signage is in a pretty poor state. We went by it a few minutes ago, and only half the signs light, only half of the ID sign lights, and the site is, is worn, I think is the polite way of putting it. So it incorporates gas and diesel refueling and a car wash. This program's goal is to refurbish the site, uplift it, and attract new customers, and because of the decrepit nature of the site, it's underperformed for a number of years. Advertisement of gas prices and the name of the gas station are two key elements in the success of any gas station. The Hafner's name is a solid brand in this area, and that is really the, one of the main assets that Energy North brought. So we applied for permits to replace the canopy, the canopy signage, the ID sign, the main sign on the road, and pump toppers. The ID sign and the canopy sign have been illuminated for about 15 to 20 years. We believe that they were legally permitted. We did a search of town records, and we've not turned anything up, except anything other than that. The current canopy signage, it's 323 square feet approximately. We wish to reduce it to 102 square feet. We wish also to add a light bar to the, to the canopy. So this here shows the existing signage on one side of the canopy, and I believe that's in your package. And this is what we want to replace it with, a smaller signage with a red band on the canopy and on the illuminated red band, but we also wish to add a light bar to the top of the canopy. We also want to rationalize the ID sign and prices by removing the arrow, removing this manual price unit, which is off to the side of the site, and reducing the sign itself slightly in size. So that will result in a net decrease of the size of that sign package, if you like, by 50 square feet. So our proposals represent a significant reduction in nonconformity, reducing sizes and light output of the ID sign or canopy signs. As concerns each element, the current ID sign is 160 square, 164 square feet. This includes the sign and the arrow below it. If you add this manual pricer, which really performs most of the functions of an ID sign, the total area of signs that essentially perform the function of pricing and site identification have an area of about 191 square feet. The old sign face, the sign face of the old sign lights in its entirety. I should say that it's meant to light in its entirety because currently it only halflights. The letters and numbers are the only thing that will light in the new sign. We wish to add price digits with a toggle unit, and I'll explain what that is in a minute, and we wish to reduce the size of that entire sign, the 191 square feet, to 138 square feet. The non-price area of the sign is 58% of the total. So LED price changes will be familiar to, I'm sure, the board members. It's a newish technology that's replacing the old technology of manual readers. These signs do not have the ability to display information other than number digits or words, and they do not have the ability to display moving images, flashing, or animation. The actual physical makeup of the sign is not capable of doing that. They make it easier for the public to read gas prices and thus improve traffic safety. Manual prices are very difficult to change in windy and icy conditions. They fall into a plastic track, or they slot into a plastic track. In icy and windy, icy conditions, the track tends to freeze up, and they're very difficult to actually seed. And they would be impractical in this case because of the height of the sign. LED signs are changed remotely. This improves the safety of the employees. Most importantly, though, they form part of a system in a modern gas station, which includes the POS system, what if sale system, the ID sign with the digits in it, and pump toppers, which can be, and also the gas prices actually on the gas dispenser itself, which can be changed remotely from a central site. So they form part of a system that is part of the technology that runs a modern gas station. The toggle unit, there's that unit up there, it alternates around every 10 seconds, and it changes from no wash to wash, and as it does that, the price below it changes. For example, the wash price may be $2.80 per gallon, and the no wash may be $2.90. So if you have a wash, you buy a wash at the gas pump, you incur a discount. As I said, the digital part of the sign only shows words and numbers, not pictures and changes in an instant without any form of translation. The toggles are new technology that allows gas stations to charge more for credit prices and to display them in a more transparent way than, for example, adding the word "with wash" to the sign. The need to charge more for credit card prices is a result of the narrowing in the margin of gas, of a gallon of gas, and the actual credit card prices. So when you put your credit card into a gas pump, the credit card company will charge you between 2% and 3.5% of the value of that transaction. The petroleum industry has seen, with decreasing demand, they've seen lowering margins, and the margins on a gallon of gas can be sometimes as low as 10%. So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to bundle a car wash with a gallon of gas, and that takes the sting out of the, out of the credit card processing fees. It also improves utilization. In other words, it's a way of attracting business into the car wash, which helps offset the cost of the credit card fees and ensures that the site will remain viable for some time. The current, the current canopy has two sets of Hafner's letters and two car wash letters, associated donkeys and arrows. They add up to about 270 square feet. We're proposing to reduce that to around 200, sorry, 102 square feet. So we're significantly less than half the current area is what we would like to do. The light bar is a metal channel. It's about three inches deep. It goes around the edge of the canopy, and it shines a soft light down on the face of the canopy, and it also, it also lights the drip edge of the canopy, which promotes safety. Just, just for, just.
Go ahead. Just this one here, please turn your phones off. Go ahead.
There we go. Just as a matter of disclosure, we want to mention to the board that we're putting digital pump toppers on the pumps.
Excuse me, yeah, thank you. No problem.
No, no, no problem at all. It was a bit of brevity. Permits are not issued or requested for gas pump toppers. They just happen to be a fact of law. So we will be adding gas pump, pump toppers to the tops of the pumps, and we will be relabeling the pumps. They are brand new pumps, so Energy North were new pumps in. As I said, this is an entire system. It consists of the POS system, pump toppers, the ID sign, and the actual pumps and soles. And they are all connected to the internet, and they allow the operator to, or the owner, to change prices and to manage the station significantly from a remote point of view. So we wrote to the building inspector requesting comment on the signage and referred him to Chapter 48 of the Mass State Code, which protects pre-existing non-conforming structures. In particular, we felt the canopy was probably protected under this. We had a lot of communication, and the end result was that he suggested that we go for variances, and that's why we're here now. They are obviously pre-existing non-conforming. Signs are all internally illuminated, and they're much bigger than would be currently To the criteria for the application, describe the special circumstances related to soil conditions, the shape or the topography of the land, or structure that are unique to this parcel. The site's been a parcel for many, many years, certainly, we believe, 30-plus years. It's currently legally permitted and has internally illuminated signs. Gas stations are unique, and they display prices that change frequently, and they're one of the few businesses that posts prices and changes them on a regular basis, up to several times a week under normal circumstances. They're also unique in the volume of short-duration traffic entering and exiting the site. Few other businesses host the volume of vehicles entering, staying for a short time, and exiting. This particular case, this site is unusual in that it has nine dispensers crammed into a fairly small space, and there are 14 possible fueling positions and a car wash on the site. So direction, traffic safety is absolutely key to this particular site. So that's one of the things that makes this site unique. As far as digital prices are concerned, these are the only applications for these units, manual or electronic, to display numbers. They're consequently almost entirely used on gas stations. It's not an application that many other businesses use. Occasionally, you'll see them in hotels, but 99% of these digital prices are unique to gas stations. Displaying prices is key to the site's success. The ability to tie gas prices to the car wash is also key. It's impractical to use manual prices for a sign of this size and height. The gas price digits would be 21-inch panels, and the diesel and heating oil are 16-inch panels, and would be needed, need to be lifted about 16 feet in the air. Hence, the manual pricer that is on site now, that's why they have that man, that blue manual pricer, is because it would be so, it would be impractical to put manual prices on that sign. The ID sign scales correctly to the property in size and height. Current sign allows clear visibility under the sign for exiting traffic and clear visibility for traffic approaching the site. External illumination has limited benefit for a sign of this size. Internally illuminated signs are significantly more effective and visible than externally illuminated signs. As I said, we intend just, the current sign, the entire face lights on this sign will just, like the donkey, the word Hafner's, the white will be completely opaque at night, the red will be completely opaque at night, bar the words that you see there, and the only thing that will light on the bottom panel is the word, is the word "car wash." The rest of that side will not light. Lighting the canopy signage is essential to provide clear notice to traffic heading in both directions, but especially heading north where sightlines are obscured by the car wash. To the second point, specify how the circumstances do not generally affect other properties in the zoning district. Apart from the fact that this site is unusual in the area because it's a gas station, the owner is unique in the town that he operates a gas station with an associated car wash. There are no other properties like this in the area. He's, that's the only business that has the opportunity to bundle gas and car washes. Lying to him to continue with internally illuminated signs is not going to result in a wholesale adoption of signs with internal illumination because he has pre-existing internally illuminated signs unlike most other businesses, and as I said, this is a gas station uniquely with a car wash attached to it. To the third point, explain how literal enforcement of the North Andover zoning bylaw will result in a substantial hardship to the owner. The law, as written, would force the owner to relinquish his existing internally illuminated signs in favor of externally illuminated signs. Signage and lighting are the key to the success of this brand as they are to all brands. Internally illuminated signs are significantly more effective than externally illuminated signs. Displaying two-level gas prices is not easily possible with a manual sign, and to do that, we have to really light the signs. In other words, the digits would form that lighting. Bundling car washes and gas sales is a key part of the owner's business model. Not being able to convey this effectively would be a great hardship. Explain how the proposed variance in the minute, it's the minimum change that is necessary to allow the reasonable use of the land or structure. We're making a substantial change in, in, to a non-conforming site, moving it towards conformity. The signage and associated lighting represent a significant reduction in the sign area and lighting from the existing signage. So the ID sign reduces from, however you look at it, either 191 square feet to 138 or 148 to 138. And as I said, we're removing the arrow, and we intend to remove this manual pricer so that represents a significant reduction in the, in the signage on the, that is associated with that price sign. The signage as a whole will be reduced by nearly 30%, 30% in size. As I said, the existing sign lights entirely, only the letters light on the proposed sign. On the canopy, the proposed aggregate area is 102 square feet. This is less than a third of the existing signage. To the fifth point, explain why granting the proposed variance would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning law. The goals of the code are regulation and restriction of signs, and also the restriction of signs and lights, which overload the public's capacity to receive information, which violate privacy or which increase the probability of accidents by distracting attention. Effects on the neighborhood will be positive. The site is worn down and is not attractive. This investment will improve the appearance of the site, improve the clarity of the signage, reduce the total area of the signage and thus clutter by about 45%, ensure the viability of the business, and improve traffic and customer safety, customer safety on site. What's the impact on the neighborhood and how will it not be detrimental to the neighborhood? These signs represent a major component of the improvement of a site that is somewhat under-maintained. The new appearance is a substantial improvement, and the light output represents a significant reduction. These, in fact, these figures are not entirely accurate, but they're certainly directionally, directionally correct. The ID sign output will be reduced from about 90,000 lumens to 42,000 lumens, about half. The output from the canopy from 68 to 60, and the light generated by the light bar will essentially shine down. It won't shine out like the current channel letters do. So there is a, a reduction in the light output from the side, the signage component, from about 158,000 lumens to about 100,000 lumens. So there's a significant reduction in the light output. Those numbers are not, they're difficult to capture exactly, but they're directionally correct, and that in itself will have a positive effect on the neighborhood. In summary, Energy North is investing heavily in the Hafner's brand. It's promoting a sensitive renovation of this site using existing structures while attempting to maintain, to balance the needs of the town. And it's happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Just to make sure that I, I understand what we're looking at here. So for the, for the canopy, the plan is to, to have the only internally illuminated sections be the logos and the donkey picture, and the, the large color sections are going to be externally illuminated by a downward bar.
That is correct. The car, the car wash here lights as well.
Right, okay.
The, the letters would be the car wash, the Hafner's, and the donkey, and they replace that, that section up there, and that replicates on the other side of the canopy. That's exactly, it's the same on there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that it was that and not the entire rim of the thing. Okay.
So are you putting the sign in the same location?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Same setback as, as well?
It'll use the same poles.
The same poles. And the other question is, so why is the donkey and the logo internally illuminated when the only part of that, that your whole, is, is the numbers is what needs to be changed? I'm not understanding why that portion of the sign needs to be internally illuminated as well.
Just because it's the logo, the, it's the, the brand logo.
So the, just for appearance? No other reason as just appearance?
Well, appearance and safety, it's, it's a lot, it's, it's more effective to internally illuminate that.
So you could do a combination of externally illuminating the top and internally illuminating for safety the number portion of that sign as well, correct?
Yeah, we could, we could externally eliminate the word "Hafner's" and then internally eliminate the word, you know, the red band of the center. That would be, that would be possible.
I'm sorry, what was that? Can you just explain that?
Yes.
Lean into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk to the TV.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we could, we could externally eliminate the word "Hafner's" on the ID sign. We could internally eliminate that red band with the, with the price digits in it, and it would, it would be clumsy, but we could externally illuminate the word "car wash" from the, from the underneath. So that would be, that would be possible.
So let me just clarify, what, so what you're doing now is internally illuminating the whole thing?
Correct.
So what portion, oh, so you, so you just said a different sentence to another board member, so the whole sign is going to be internally illuminated then?
That's what we're, so we're requesting the entire sign to be internally illuminated. However, the, what we're going to do is, as part of that internal illumination, we're going to black out the white behind the word "Hafner's," the red under the, under the price digits, and the white under the word "car wash." So if you look at it at night, the only things that would light on that would be the word "Hafner's," the "car wash," and then the words, for example, diesel, cash, heating oil. Those would be the only things that lit on that sign, and then the digits obviously as well.
To clarify, Ellen, I was asking about the canopy earlier rather than the sign.
Okay. All right.
Any questions?
You mentioned 13 stations. Is this makeover that you're, that we're talking about on Chickering, is that the same bits being implemented at the other stations in the other towns?
Yes, sir. So so far, we've done one in Tewksbury, Bridge Street in Lowell, I think, two in Lawrence, one in Groton, one in Townsend, one in Waltham, which is a little bit of an outlier, and then we have another, I believe it's five or six to run this year, this being one of them.
So there, you feel that you were looking for documentation on the approval of this going back, correct? That this was for the internal lighting of the signs?
When we looked at the site originally, and I'm, I know you're familiar with it, there's a, there's a massive amount of signage on the canopy. We looked for permits on that going back many years, and we couldn't find them. We talked to an orig, one of the very, very old Hafner's employees, who is still with Energy North, and he said that they were originally illuminated, you know, 30 years ago, to his memory.
Okay. I worked there longer than.
I worked there longer than that. And they were internally illuminated then.
So I'm going to ask my peers a question, if I can direct it. So when, within the bylaws, did, when were the bylaws established and how does that relate to when they originally began the illumination at Hafners? Does anybody know? So I mean, what's going through my mind is, how did they get there? What came first, the chicken or the egg here in terms of the bylaws or, and then if there's not a permit, so there's, that's where my mind's at.
Yeah. And I could only guess and say that this was done, and it was permissible at the time. Whether it was done through variance or whether it was done through an absence of a bylaw, I don't know. But I would give all benefit of the doubt here and say that, you know, this was not done in the dark of night.
I mean, I suspect this was predating the bylaw. We've had, we had another case earlier, I think it was a year ago, where we had a, another gas station with previously existing internally illuminated signs.
That was a different situation, though. That was on the Lawrence border.
Sure.
With the other, I mean, those dynamics there were different.
Oh, of course, of course. Right, right. But I I meant more just that they were in North Andover and they were able to previously have built that sign because they built it prior to.
But it wasn't illuminated.
Our bylaw. It was at the time.
It wasn't illuminated. No, it was, it was the positioning of the sign.
Yeah, it wasn't illuminated before.
Wasn't?
No, it was the new standard they had. It wasn't an illuminated sign.
Ah. I thought it, I thought it had been illuminated and they needed to replace it. That was my understanding.
It was. It was an existing pre internally illuminated sign.
Yeah. I thought it was like this one where where the previous sign just did not have price listings on it, but it was internally illuminated in the same way.
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
Well, let me, let me ask a couple of questions. What hours will the lights be on?
So our understanding is that the site is open from five to eleven, five in the morning to eleven o'clock at night. And those are the hours of operation, to my understanding of the site. I don't think there's any call to increase it beyond that.
Okay, so so lights would go on at five in the morning and lights would show off at eleven o'clock at night?
Correct. Because in general, gas stations have no interest in leaving lights on after they close because they want to discourage people from parking on the gas station. And so in general, when the station closes, the lights go off. And that that is a convention within that industry.
So with the understanding, I do get that the current situation of manually changing the numbers, both, you know, the frequency that it must be done and the hazard that it may present. I got that. What I don't get is the compelling business reason for this. There's not competition for gas there. At least three went down the street, but shut down. So you've got to drive down quite a ways to get another gas station. So it's not a cluster of gas stations where you need to compete with them on whether it's price or the car wash, whatever.
Yeah.
I don't see the compelling business reason for this.
So the, the, one compelling reason is to drive traffic that would normally not use the car wash into the car wash. And the part of this proposal that does that is the toll unit and the dual pricing. So that's the first part of the compelling business reason. The other thing is that people are much more mobile now than they, you know, than they were previously. I mean, we just drove past several gas stations within a couple of miles of this site that were offering either high or low prices. So it was interesting on the way in, the global, the global site was thirty cents cheaper than the mobile site opposite it. And the global was mobbed because it's a, essentially a price war. So people will drive a fair distance to actually get a cheaper gallon of gas. So first of all, the compelling business reason to do this is to try and drive people into the, into the car wash, mitigate those credit card fees and improve the profitability of the site. But the other thing is to compete effectively with other local gas stations, whether they're in North Andover or, you know, Andover or Lawrence or adjoining communities.
Okay, so it's your, it's your belief then that if I was driving down one twenty-five, I could just as easily say, well, I'm not going to buy gas there. I'm going to go over to Market Basket, one fourteen, to buy gas at two cents a gallon less, even though I won't know what the price is over there, I'll know the prices of the station I drive by.
People tend to follow, I think the gap, the model is that people tend to follow similar routes each day and they tend to be, and they tend to be aware of, you know, price pockets within this industry. And I think that is the, that's the way to view it, really. It's a people, people are creatures of habit. I mean, we all drive relatively similar, similar routes on, on relatively same days that, you know, in the week. I mean, Monday to Friday, I drive from, you know, my home up to work and I pretty well drive the same way. Saturdays, I tend to do something similar, you know, a similar sort of route. And I think that's what, that's what the station hopes to do, is to attract people that pass it that would otherwise be going to a gas station in another, in another area. And this will hopefully do that. The, the, the other thing about the car wash is that it's, it's a much more detailed package than just pricing, you know, twenty cents off for doing the car wash or other things that go with the car wash. Packages, you know, that you can buy a package where you get free car wash, where you get, you pay for all your car washes for a month or you pay for a bundle of car washes. So the car wash is, is a key part of the business model of this site. And I think, maybe I didn't explain that well enough, but that is a.
It's okay, I understand that. I go out of my way to go to this gas station. So the fact you told me it was rundown was news to me because I was like, I'm going to look at it a little harder next time I go.
Although, I mean, we, we looked, we looked at it a few minutes ago and half the letters are not, not on the canopy, the lenses are falling off the letters. It'll get a, as part of this makeover, it'll get a complete new paint job. You know, come springtime, the pavement's going to be repaired, the lighting, I think you noticed, has been improved. It's part of a major, significant investment in this brand by Energy North.
Right, so the canopy is, is static?
Yes.
The price board is not?
No.
And the price board sits on the side of this, side of the road?
Yeah, it's on the side of the.
It'll be where that car wash sign is now?
It's, it's exactly in the same place as it currently is.
Okay, where the plastic numbers are.
It's this sign here. It's that one.
Okay, so that'd be where the price board is.
Correct. So we're taking that down. We're, we're putting a new one up that's slightly smaller than that one.
Okay. And I'm a little confused because I thought you had said there wasn't going to be a lot of motion in the sign, but every ten seconds it will change the information.
Yes. So what will happen to it is this, that word there will go from wash to no wash.
Right.
And then with it, the numbers will change by twenty cents, something like that.
All right. So what would happen if you had this sign, I don't know if this is possible, LEDs but was lit indirectly?
You, these LEDs are basically, you know, just like your old.
They're washed.
So they, there's no way of externally illuminating it. There's no, there's no technology that I'm aware of that would allow you to, to make them externally illuminated.
There, there actually, I mean, there is one, but it's not commonly used in the United States. You can get basically e-paper displays. In Germany, that's popular, but it's not, I don't think it's caught on in the United States.
I'm not entirely familiar with that. The other issue that you face when you, when you start to adopt new technology is, you've got to remember this is part of the package. It's part of the POS, it's the point of sale, the actual dispenser. So the point of sales units are sold by one of two vendors of the actual dispensers. Actually, quite difficult to link into. To actually interface that with a system that would allow Energy North and Lawrence to change prices would be quite difficult. So that, that interface is very specific. So within the US, there's really only one vendor that offers, offers what we're looking for here, unfortunately.
Further questions?
Well, I, I'll, I'll jump in since I was the noisiest when we did this station down in front of Market Basket and Coles, which is that the, the code says no internally illuminated signs. I appreciate that you're hearing a variance. And I also appreciate that you've come a long way in reducing the number of and the amount of the non-conformity. So that's something that speaks very loudly to me and I, I appreciate that. Where I get stuck, however, is that the code says, you know, no internally illuminated signs. And there needs to be a hardship in order to, you know, achieve variance integrity here. And the hardship that, which I think Ron was exploring with you is kind of the compelling business reason. Maybe there's more to it than that. But if the compelling business reason is, I, I need to attract customers or the hardship is I'm going to lose customers, then, you know, it's just not something that resonates for me. Because, you know, one of the things you said is we're creatures of habit. We drive that road, we're either going to Hafners or we're going to, you know, somewhere else or going to, going to prime, you know, way down the street. So I, just speaking from my own, you know, individual perspective, which is how many of our lives are colored, is by our own experiences and our own behaviors. You know, there's nothing about an internally illuminated sign that's going to get me to come into your store. With that, with that said, you know, I get it. There are people smarter than I that have been in this marketplace and they say you got to have big flashing signs with Mickey Mouse, Donald Duck and everybody dancing in the street in order to get people into your shop, which I find to be bogus. They're selling something. And in this case, you're selling gas? I, I look at that board and it looks like a high school football board. I mean, I, I can't read that from whether it's five hundred feet down the street or two feet away, especially if it's changing every ten seconds. So there is nothing about that sign. And we're not, we're not here to adjudicate, you know, the, the qualities, whether or not this sign resonates for me. I'm just offering, you know, perhaps a focus group of one in the context of the, the hardship that I am really having a tough time getting to, quite frankly. You know, externally illuminated stuff works just fine in communities around the country. There are plenty of ways to get the, the number boards, you know, changed. And a challenging interface is not something that resonates for me because technology can fix darn near anything. I mean, that's why we have computers. We have computers, we have programmers to like, to, to make this stuff work. So I, I mean, I, I sit here, there are a lot of things that I liked what you said, there are other things that I didn't, you know, what else is new? That's true with every application. So I'm, I'm not really on the fence here other than to say internally illuminated signs are prohibited by the code unless we can find a hardship in order to grant a variance. And just as a voice of one, just as a member of one, I'm not finding the hardship, but I'm hoping that maybe you can get me over the goal line on that one.
Okay. So I'd, I'd offer three points to you. Firstly, one of the hardships is losing the internally illuminated signs that this site has had for thirty years. So that's one of the hardships and they're currently illuminated.
I don't think that, I just say it again.
So one of the hardships would be losing the internally illuminated signs that this site has had for thirty years. And they're currently internally eliminated. So that would be one hardship.
So let's stop there. That's circular. I mean, the reason that you're losing the internally illuminated sign is because you want to do a refurbishment. So the business, the location is choosing to go down a path to refurbish the site. So the hardship is not that the board is making you get rid of your internally illuminated signs. We're not. We're just saying that, look, if you want to put up new signs, you know, they got to be externally illuminated. So that, that number one hardship is a circularity that's a little bit of an obfuscation and like, it doesn't resonate for me. Maybe it does for other voting board members, I don't know. But I'm just going to, you know, let's, let's go through them. That was number one. Number two is?
Number two is the ability to interface the, the technology portion. And I understand what you're saying. It is just not very easy to do. In fact, it's impossible to do what we're trying to do here without using this technology. In other words, the pumps, the pump toppers and the sign and the POS system. It's impossible to do that without, without using digital signs and, and the, the entire package. The POS systems are produced by either Goldbacher or Wayne, the two vendors of pumps. It's a very, very closed world in terms of how you interface with those things. So that would be the other part. The other hard, hardship.
So that, so the POS system, I heard you say that there are several components of it. And the only component that I'm currently like concerned about is, you know, our, our price point sign there because the pump, pump toppers is not really a topic of conversation here. POS doesn't have anything to do with, you know, your, the banners on the, on the top of the canopy there. So let, let, I'm just trying to make sure that we stay within, within the rails here with some kind of guidelines.
The, the current method of pricing on that, on that site is this manual pricer, the blue manual pricer. So that's what they're doing to price currently. We would like to take that away and, and promote something that is a little easier to use and a little more, has a better appearance for the site. So, you know, there is pricing on the site and it is manual, but it's really, I mean, pretty crummy, in my opinion, as far as, as far as the town is concerned, it looks pretty awful. So, and the last part is bundling the, being able to bundle the gas and the car washes. That's a key part to the, to the business equation within this site. Without doing something like this, it's very hard to communicate that, that to people. It's very hard to communicate that there's a difference in price between gas prices with a car wash and without a car wash. Currently on this side, it's done by a little dinky thing on top that says cash. And that is, it's a very unsatisfactory way of, of advertising your ways to the public.
The trick is we're creatures of habit, though. Everybody knows what cash price means. Everybody knows what credit price is. I mean, I'm fifty-two years old. We've had a cash and credit price, you know, since I was six, since I can remember driving around town with my mother. So I'm, I'm not like sitting here convinced that this is better, particularly when, if this thing changes every ten seconds, then what I'm actually getting is a teaser price, which is I'm going to drive in because I saw that it was two dollars and ninety-eight cents, but actually when I get to the pump, because eleven seconds later or ten seconds later, the price changed, oh my gosh, I'm actually paying ten cents more because they need me to buy a car wash. Now, I get the, I get why that works. It's just not compelling for me, driving on the street, you know, sitting here on, you know, as a board member. It's not a compelling reason for me to say, oh, internally illuminate, internally illuminate this, that's great. Like I'm, I'm, again, just not getting there.
So this is what it looks like to me. Your hardships, to me, are business issues. That's part of running your business. I mean, that's, okay, that's what we face in, in, in our society. So now the question is, do your business issues in terms of who wins, business issues or is it the, the bylaws that we have? That's the dilemma that we, that I see right now as I sit here. Like what wins? Our bylaws or your business hardships? That's, if you can help me see something more, I'd like to, I'd like to be, have my eyes opened.
Can I answer?
Yep.
What we have here is a grandfather juice for a gas station that's been here that predate zoning laws. Okay? He wants to reduce, let me emphasize their word, reduce the amount of signage that's available. He wants to reduce the outstanding violations. He wants to make it less. Now, if we refuse this guy or him, the Hafners, whatever, we are sending out a message to the entire town of North Andover, all existing businesses, do not approve your business. Don't do anything good. Just keep the old dumb drab stuff you have because nothing gets past the zoning board. He's trying to improve the area, okay? He wants to send the message out. We're going to send the message out to the community. Yes, we want you to approve your business within the current guidelines. Okay, we want you to take a bad situation and try and make it a little bit better. Okay? And all you people, you're fighting the guy. You're fighting the guy. The business has been there for years, as long as I can remember. Who, who, who worked there? Okay? Okay, how long has that business been there? Is it a detriment to, to society?
How long have I worked there?
Okay? Okay, is that business a detriment to society?
Could I suggest that this is a discussion that comes after the, I finish asking the questions?
Yeah, but you guys are crucifying the guy.
I think we're just asking.
Okay, wait until he's woke this year.
Ellen, I think we're just asking the questions which we're supposed to be asking. All right. Other questions from the folks who are here and then I'll ask Alexander and Ellen if they have any other questions. Alexander, Ellen, any other questions?
I, I'm going to comment. It's more of a comment than a question.
Can we turn it up a bit?
Can you hear that?
I can, yeah.
Do you want to speak up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the issue that I'm having, again, is to have, and it's a fancy play on words, the whole sign is going to be internally illuminated. Because you're blacking it out, I have an issue with that. I think, you know, going back to the sign on one fourteen, excuse me, near the highway, that was a partial. The top, the top portion was externally and the bottom portion, which I agree, changing the prices. I, I do think standing on a ladder and changing the prices manually is not efficient. So I have no problem with that portion of the sign being illuminated in the prices, but the top portion is what I have issue with. So that's my comment on there.
And you had mentioned a willingness earlier to the possibility of amending your, your application to have an external illumination for those portions.
So if, I mean, I think we'd be able to compromise, maybe Mr. Coach, this would be good for you as well, is if we externally illuminated the word Hafners and externally eliminated the word car wash, but we kept the digits and really. And really to be reasonable, we'd have to internally eliminate the red portion, but we'd only like the words on that, because you couldn't re, I mean, technologically, I don't think we could actually externally eliminate the red portion, but that would significantly reduce the amount of internal elimination. Maybe that's a problem.
Believe it or not, I have no problem with that. Believe it or not.
Look, and that, and that's where I was landing, you know, down in, down, down in front of the, the market basket, which is that if you can eliminate the, the internal illumination around the site, um, uh, but, but, you know, so keep your band, keep, keep the price banned, and-
And that would be internally illuminated, but only the, the red would not light, only the white letters would light.
Understood.
And then we'd be happy to externally eliminate the top part, and externally eliminate the bottom part, and I'd be fine with that.
So the part that's internally illuminated is just the changing information?
No, it would be, it would be that entire bad, though, because it's-
The, the red cache, the diesel cache.
Right, that's basically the changing information piece of it.
Yeah, that's-
Okay.
That would be, that would be fine.
All right. And that the canopy is externally illuminated?
The, well, the canopy, that isn't, the car wash is internally eliminated, the Hafners is internally eliminated, and it has the downwash eyebrow on it.
So, so there we go. Where I was landing is if you can eliminate the internal illumination around the site, uh, but keep the, the price banned, or, you know, whatever that internal illumination is, you know, that's a place that I could, could likely go.
So I should probably know better than to argue with the property lawyer, but I think we're protected under 40A on the canopy, because we're not changing the, we're not changing the copy at all.
Understood. And, you know, and if a decision doesn't go your way, then you're certainly welcome to exercise whatever rights there are, there are. So I, I agree, I don't need to argue either, because everybody, everybody has, always has a next step.
Yeah.
Other, other questions? Alexandra, any questions?
I do not have any.
All right.
Do we want to offer a public comment?
We do. All right. So is there anybody else here who has a comment on this matter?
What are the odds?
Seeing none.
Then I'd like a motion to close the public comment.
Keep our here second?
I second.
All right. Look, okay, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, to what, to what end? Are we, we headed to a vote? No, we're headed to internal discussion?
Well, are we gonna have one? Or are we gonna have a, are, would you like to continue? Are you gonna ask for a continuance, do you think?
I, I, I mean, I sit here and suggesting, look, if we go to, if we go to deliberations, that means we're headed to a vote. We're headed to a vote, then we're headed to a vote on this application. The applicant, the applicant has extended a willingness to amend the application with some different designs. The applicant may be interested in putting this off until, uh, they're allowed to present that stuff.
So you don't see, you don't see-
Or the applicant can press for a vote tonight, I mean, that's certainly there.
But you don't see the ability to add, to modify, add the code to sell the list that it changes based on what you just discussed? You need a separate submission for that?
I need a, I'm sorry, I, I do prefer-
We've done other ones where we have, they have made a change during the course of the discussion, and we make that as part of what we approve. And what you're saying is, we don't want to do that here, we want a separate submission.
Well, yeah, because I, I don't have anything to approve, until, until there is a, a reworked design, I think. I mean, because we can't, we can't approve anything on, on these plans if we're gonna be eliminating internal illumination in, in areas. So I certainly wouldn't press forward with a vote tonight.
All right, well, let, let me ask you, would you like the continuance to redraw this based on the discussion of what will be internally and externally illuminated? All right. So we need to vote on continuance?
Is, is a month long enough, or do you think you want more time?
A month is fine.
Ron?
Yes?
Before we vote, I just wanna make sure that the applicant gets, because you had said a, a new submission. And I'm, I don't, from my understanding, it doesn't sound like we're needing a new, a whole new application, just the new changes that he's willing to make. So I don't want him thinking he has to redo the entire process all over again.
I'm confident Mr. March doesn't think that, he's a professional, but I, I will ask. You do not need to submit everything, you're just submitting any amended plans, drawings?
I mean, is it, is it appropriate to ask the board where they're going with the canopy? I mean, is that, is that-
If, if you're asking, is it appropriate to poll the board on, on, you know, how it would vote? Then I would say that, no, we're not quite there.
No, I'm trying to work out whether we go externally eliminated or whether there's a consensus that we could continue with internal elimination on the canopy.
The sense I got was the more external you do, the better.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The sense I got from the discussion was the more you go external-
The better off we are.
That's just the sense I got.
Okay.
What is it now? Is it internally illuminated?
The letters are internally eliminated, the, uh, yeah, the, the chat letters are internally eliminated.
All right. So should we-
Sit down. Jen, Jen, our next hearing is when?
December 14th.
Ask for a motion to December 14th.
Yes. Um, so do I have a motion to continue until December 14th?
I make a motion to continue to when?
December 14th.
December 14th.
Thank you, second? All right. They'll give you the, the roll call vote. There's my roll. Alexandria, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Alan?
Yep.
Alan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. Uh, we are continuing, and I am supposed to say, Jennifer, let me make sure I remember this. Continuance is, we will not publish a new notice. All right, so don't even go looking for one.
Please see, Jen, I think she's got a time waiver for you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Ron, before we go to the next application, I just want you to know that I'm going to recuse from this one.
Yes, thank you. So who is, which, which alternate gets to take Alexandria's place?
That's Jen.
Yeah, no.
Hey, Alexandria, does that mean, are you gonna leave us for the balance of the meeting, or should we expect you for adjournment?
I'll just stay on mute.
You need not, I'm sure you've got other things to do.
All right, should we refer to come back?
Absolutely.
All right.
We can't do anything without Jen.
So the question, Jen, on the floor. Who, which alternate is up, is up next?
Michael.
All right, Michael, you're up. All right. So we move to the next item. Mr. Kruja.
Notice as if I given that the Northern, North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall and 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Jonathan Grasso for property at 34 Wentworth Avenue, MAP 67, parcel 2, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requiring variances pursuant with the Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1 lot area, section 195-7.2 street frontage, section 195-7.3, 7.3 yards setback, and section 195-7.8 exceptions in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1 lot area. Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for lot area in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new 23 by 35 single-family home, specifically. Applicant has requested a lot area needing a relief variance of 7,953 square feet. Lot area proposed is 4,547 square feet. And lot area required per table 2 is 12,500. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.2 street frontage. Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for street frontage in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new 23 by 35 single-family home, specifically. Applicant has requested street frontage needing a relief variance of 52.5 feet. Street frontage proposed is 47.5 feet. And street frontage required per table 2 is 100 feet. Next. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yard setback. Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing, of constructing a new 23 by 35 single-family home, specifically. Applicant has requested a left-side setback needing a relief variance of 2.8 feet. Left-side setback proposed is 12.2 feet. And side setback required per table 2 is 15 feet. Next. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 1, section 195-7.3 yard setback. Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new 23 by 35 single-family home, specifically. Applicant has requested a right-side setback needing a relief variance of 2.7 feet. Right-side setback proposed is 12.3 feet. And side setback required per table 2 is 15 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And Friday from the hours of 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Clark Jr., Esquire, and the Chairman.
I have cut up that audio and saved it on my computer, you know.
All right, thank you.
I'm done.
All right, is there somebody here from 34 Wentworth? And could you please introduce yourselves with name and address?
Good evening. Stephanie Kiefer from Smallock and Vaughan, on behalf of the applicant, Jonathan Grasso.
Jonathan Grasso, 67 Longwood Avenue, North Andover.
Thank you very much. Floor is yours.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, we actually are here this evening to-
Excuse me, one second, can you take the mask, though, you did a little muffle?
I can, yes.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you. Um, we're here this evening actually to request that the board open the hearing and then to continue it until the next hearing, which I believe is December 14th. Um, we've, um, and as explanation for this, um, we've realized that the, the notification and the, um, the legal ad, they both, um, referenced, this was intended to be an appeal of the building inspector's, um, decision pursuant to section 15, and in the alternative of variance. And so to, um, correct that and clarify that and make, make it clear on the record and before the board, um, we're requesting that the hearing be continued until the 14th, um, and that if there be new notice required to clarify that, that, that that's timely. The, um, just for your edification, the building inspector's decision was dated October 14th, so the 30 days has not yet expired on that, so we can make certain that everything is cleaned up before we present to the board.
So is motion to continue?
So the, the, help, help you out is, yes, motion to continue to, uh, November 14th. Uh, sometimes what we do is, since, since it's generated so much community interest, not everybody can make December 14th. So the, it's, you know, the pleasure of the chair, you can invite folks up for, you know, you know, brief commentary to get themselves on the record, if they're not gonna be able to be here on the 14th.
Right.
But there is nothing that compels you to do so.
Well, I feel compelled to do so. Because people did come out. So I will ask people in the gallery, if you are interested in making a comment, please, uh, do so. Name and address, please, and also strive for brevity if possible. And the other one is that if you've heard somebody make the exact same point before, maybe not make it again. Does anybody want to comment?
Ron, before you-
I'll just make a quick addendum, which is that, uh, Mr. Chair has offered for y'all to strive for brevity tonight. I'm going to amend that and say that I will be a person who will be checking on that brevity, because the, the hearing is open, yes, we do not, however, have a complete application before us. I appreciate that, uh, opinions and emotions can run high on something like this. Uh, to the extent that we can, as civilized human beings control ourselves, that would be awfully helpful. Um, so anybody who has something to say, uh, just kind of organize yourselves. I'm sure you're all familiar with each other, maybe you want to nominate a couple of people if there is somebody who wants to make a longer statement. Uh, but my suggestion, my practice in the past, Mr. Chair, has been to, you know, limit people to about a minute and a half or two minutes at the most. You can certainly aggregate your time and get 10 minutes at the most, uh, if four or five people want to band together.
Can, can I just ask a procedural question? Procedural question before we continue on?
Go ahead.
Why are you gonna amend this, uh, application to have, pardon the echo, to, um, have the decision reversed from the building inspector?
So why, why are you appealing?
That, that is, yes, that is correct. Um, the, in the application and the material submitted to the building inspector, there was also the position taken that, um, this was a, a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, that there would not be a need for a variance. And so with the denial decision that was issued, um, the, the appropriate course would be to appeal that, and then in the alternative to seek the variance for the zoning relief, so.
Can I suggest that we get, um, advice from Town Council on that? To review that before we, um, look at that?
Well, it's, it's the board's purview, Ellen, to review any challenges, any, any appeals of the building inspector's decisions come to us.
Correct.
So it's, that's, it's not an inappropriate path for an applicant to take?
It's an unusual one, however.
It's an unusual one that I, I don't recall doing often, so I'm just a little gray on that area. Why I would, I have to, if I have to review something that's a not, a pre-existing, um, lot?
As, as near as I can tell, Ellen, the why is that an appeal of, of the building inspector would, would require only three votes to overturn it, whereas the full-on variance will require the supermajority of four.
All right, all right, so we have to remember that this is gonna be a twofold. I, I'm not sure if you want to go on with comment, because this is gonna be a twofold application that you're gonna have to have that, which they left out of the, um, original application, and then they're gonna apply for the variance. So right now, you're in front of us with the variance only, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and so what's also in front of us is about 30 people who have taken time out of their lives in order to, um, you know, present themselves, so.
I, I understand, you're right, I understand that, but, um, procedurally, I don't, can we do that? Is my question, before you go forward. I don't want the comments to go, I want, I, I appreciate everyone coming out, certainly, um, but I don't want the comments to be not heard and not be into the, into the, actually into the minutes of this application.
Oh, well, they are, they are certainly on the record.
Okay.
So that they-
That's all I want to confirm, that that's gonna be on the record, because it's not a complete application. So we can continue, continue on with the variance portion of this application, and then they're gonna refile with the grievance, correct?
Well, we'll hear some public comment, then there will be a motion to continue to December 14th, and then the applicant is free to do as it will, you know, to, to achieve December 14th.
Okay.
Will, will that require a separate, a separate notification for the, uh, for the, the appeal? As, unlike the previous applicant?
Yep.
Yeah.
So let me, let me go again. Are there folks here who would like to get their comment in tonight? Who may not be able to come to a subsequent meeting to make comment? Wow.
Yes, I guess.
Well, come, come right up, we're gonna try to get through this, folks. We're all gonna try to get through this together.
Don't be shy.
Where did I go, over there?
Yeah, yeah, over to the podium.
Okay. Um, so first I just wanted to-
Could you start with name and address, please?
Oh, sorry. Julie Desmond.
We need our, the microphone in order to actually get it on the record.
Oh, okay. Um, Julie Desmond, 25, Highland View Ave., um, and a butter, so. Highland View. Yeah. Um, so I did write a whole letter, I'm not gonna read it, because you asked us to kind of, um, make it short and sweet. Um, but really what I wanted to do is just, um, kind of point out how many variances they're needing. Um, well, actually, you know what, I'll just read my letter. Okay. Um, sorry. So, dear Zoning Board of Appeal Committee, um, I'm writing you today as a butter of 35, or 34 Wentworth Ave. Um, we wanted to officially object to granting the special variances needing to build the single-family home on this lot. To my understanding, the zoning board regulations have been adopted with one goal, um, to be in the best interest of town residents-
to be in the best interest of town residents, to protect our town from overdevelopment and have our community a wonderful place to live. Therefore, variances should not be, should be granted sparingly. The scope of this project is asking for five variances, which is technically about 63% variance in order to build a single-family home. And this doesn't seem to meet our community planning goals. Our current zoning laws say that there is 12,500 square feet needed to build, and this lot is 4,547 square feet. That's technically 7,953 square feet, too small to build a home in today's standards. I do not believe that this is in the best interests of our neighborhood and that it is harmful to our abutting properties. It will impact our privacy, the look and feel of our neighborhood, and will have an impact on our existing home and property values. It's important to always look at the condition of the lot and not the wishes and goals of the landowner developer because this lot is just simply too small. The landowner and the developer are not planning on living on the property, and they do not have a vested interest in our neighborhood. Once the property is built and the profit had been taken, they will no longer care about our neighborhood leaving us with the harmful impacts. The property was purchased, to my knowledge, in the 1900s and inherited by family members. A landowner has the right to ask for a reassessment of property for taxation purposes. After each attempt to build, which there have been many denied by... Oh, what?
That's two minutes, please. Finish your thought and wrap up.
Okay. Just finishing up, to my understanding, the property... Now I'm discombobulated, sorry. Okay, so what I just wanted to say is that therefore the situation that they're saying for tax purposes is not necessarily a financial hardship, but actually a self-created situation because they did have the ability to ask the town for reassessment of the lot to a non-buildable. I also wanted to just mention that there has been, I think every abutter has at one point asked to purchase the land. I had actually asked back in 2020. I was told that my offer was too low, and I just wanted to make sure that that was stated as well.
That's three minutes, I'm gonna have to...
Okay, thank you. Lastly, I just wanted to, I do have a petition that's been signed by our neighbors. So could I give that to Jen? Thank you.
Is there additional comment?
My name is Jack Maffey, and I live, my house is right next door to that property. And if they put a house on that property, 31 Wentworth Ave.
30?
30. 30 Wentworth Ave. And my house is right next to that property. On the side of my house, it's only, it's only 13 feet away from my wall. I could almost reach out and shake hands with them. I mean, the house is too small to build a house on that property. And I moved there because I saw that open space there. Now that open space is gonna be taken away, and I'm gonna be shaking hands with my next-door neighbor. And it doesn't meet the laws to build on that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Betolia. I live at 24 Wentworth Ave. I am not an abutting neighbor, but I live two houses down from my neighbor, Jack. And at the location of 34 Wentworth Ave, it contains poor drainage. During normal precipitation, water pools in the streets beyond the entire length of the frontage, and this is the day after normal precipitation. There has been above-normal precipitation where that water breaches into my neighbor's garage. There's actually a three-foot drop down from the property level to his garage. And actually, Jack can speak to this. He's called the town multiple occasions requesting a sewer drain be installed in that location. I have photos that I can supply, like I said. And the concern is construction runoff is a concern and would negatively affect the neighboring properties. So therefore, I oppose the proposed construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna do one, no, sir. One chance, you can come back on the 14th.
Hi, my name's Barry Ann Fitzgibbons Alonso. I live at 25 Wentworth Ave. These pictures are for you. I just have a question to the board. Have you been to survey the property? Have you walked the property?
I drove by it. I drove by it, I didn't walk it, I drove by it.
And have you kind of outlined how that property's going to look on the property? And so have you done, like, you know, when I redid my kitchen, I put the blue tape down. Have you done anything like that? Because we have already been burnt once in this neighborhood, and we are not looking for a second burning. So we would like you guys to do your full, absolute, best due diligence to see what this is gonna look like and the impact it will have on our neighborhood because you haven't before, and we've been gravely disappointed by you. Thank you.
Grace Anne Bremis, 52 Highland View Avenue. I, when I moved back into North End over 38 years ago, I bought a piece of property that I had to go through a variance in order to purchase that property. The one thing that I found 38 years ago was that planning board and Board of Appeals that worked to grant me that variance worked very hard to make sure that I was following on my approximate, about 9,000-square-foot piece of land, that my house was not going to go over any side back, frontage, and in the back. So I would have loved a bigger house, but I had to follow 38 years ago what that particular board would allow me to do. But now, within that 38 years, I'm seeing our planning board, our neighborhood, changing so drastically because it seems like much more has been granted. So I'm asking this board to think of that integrity of this small neighborhood. We're not very big. We put in some very big houses. I don't know whether it, variances have been granted for some of these houses. However, we start, we start granting some of these variants on these very small lots, and I can point to you a few other lots that could very easily be sold. And you would have to indeed grant probably that same piece to a developer, to the owner. And I also want to say that we are a neighborhood that's getting hit pretty hard with other development. We've got the apartments down on High Street. We're having more building down by the Knights of Columbus. This neighborhood, young families have moved in, and they really cherish this neighborhood. And they have worked hard for their property values, as well as those of us who have been there more than 30 years. So as a person who really had to follow those laws that were there 38 years ago, I'm asking you to really look very carefully at the bylaws today and what do you want North End of a to look like, and our particular neighborhood. And again, in terms of frontage, none of us have sidewalks. So that piece of property, that house lands right at the street. And it really affects what, the way in which our neighborhood looks and the properties around it. Thank you.
We're at kind of a midpoint, I just want to say. Thank you all, by the way. What has been encouraging to me and has not occurred in the past is that you have all made separate points. I mean, this is, that is extraordinary. In years past, we get a train of people who are all saying the same thing. So the, you know, the dynamism that's going along with this presentation is extraordinarily helpful, and I appreciate your cooperation in that.
I might be the end of that run. You jinxed it. Michael Young, 40, Wentworth Avenue. I am in a butter to that property, much like what's been said before, but just from my side because this is directly gonna affect me. Like Jack, when I moved into this neighborhood 24 years ago, this lot was completely wooded. And when we bought the house, not that this is anybody else's business, but the people that we bought it from said, oh, that's never gonna be built on. It's an unbuildable lot. It's not anything that anybody could ever build a house on. And shortly after that, the owners came and chopped all the trees down and said, we're gonna build a house. And I said, good luck, but I don't think the neighborhood's gonna like that. And this is exactly what we have. This is our entire neighborhood. We're all here. And we are really just asking you, please don't do this. It's not gonna be good for us. It's definitely not gonna be good for my property value and everything else that's been said before. That's all I have. I'll be back on the 14th, though.
Thank you. So does anybody else have any initial comment to make, which we have not already heard? No? Okay. So move to continuance?
Mr. Kruja, wanna move?
I make a motion to continue it to, what date is it?
December 14th.
December 14th?
And a second?
I second.
All right, let me go through the roll. Michael, you're up first.
Aye.
All right, Alan?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am also an aye. So to be continued on the 14th. But this one, we are actually putting out a new notice.
An additional notice.
Yes, additional notice. All right. That's it, just adjournments next. All right. Do it quickly before I start moving. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll try here a second.
Second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.